Morning ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the May fourteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order if you'd all stand for the pledge. Call please.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Present.
Commissioner Hallam.
Present.
Commissioner Kirkham.
Present.
Commissioner Moore. Uh Chairman Hassett. Vice Chair Gillette. Commissioner Patillo. Commissioner Martin. And Commissioner.
Automated announcement.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, June second, at nine thirty a.m. in this same location with the exception of any continued item, and item number sixteen that will go before the Board of Supervisors on July seventh. I get a motion for approval of the March twelfth and ninth meeting minute?
Who approve?
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I am going to move item sixteen to the front, so. Quite a few people that are signed up to speak, there were some reserved seats that were right up front. When I call your name, if you could please take some of the seats up front, that way we can expedite the um public comment. Uh, doesn't say anything who the staff report is by, so how about it?
Agenda item sixteen is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number one two zero one nine one two five to allow for a childcare group home in an RE slash two point three one residential recreation two point three one minimum lot size zone in the Lake Havasu vicinity. This item was deferred from last month's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have received both opposition and support letters. Staff finds the application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
I'm good. Well, kind of. Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, the applicant is present. Do you wish to speak at this time? While the applicant's coming, may I please have, again, seated at the front, uh Diana Santa, Lu Chetta Richard, John Crawley, Carrie Allenbaum, and Jay Darian? Thank you. Morning. Name and address for the record, please?
Thank you very much. So I assume that you would like an update on the town hall, proper town hall meeting that we conducted. Is that what a good place to start?
Yes, ma'am.
So the town hall meeting was conducted on May seventh from five o'clock to six p.m. at the Aquatic Center in Lake Havasu City. Um, it's a building that's commonly used for community events and uh meetings such as the the town hall. Approximately thirty Havasu Heights neighbors were in attendance. We sent letters to each of the residents on the list that was provided to us by um uh the professionals here in the Commission. Um, we've also posted the flyer on a community bulletin board that's near all of the mailboxes. We also emailed a primary contact that does most of the communication among the group. Um, they also posted the meeting date and time and location on their social media. So we began the beat the meeting, letting them know that we were very aware of their concerns because of the prior Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as well as social media and other outreach that we'd received. And so in order to have a fruitful and organized meeting, we advised them at the onset of the meeting the concerns that we were going to address. Um, we prepared a Q and A slip and placed copies on all the tables. We addressed known concerns in our thirty minutes of the sixty minute meeting. And we left about thirty, not about, we actually left thirty minutes for their additional questions that we were taking from the slips provided. We also introduced them to the board members, pardon me, in hopes that they would get to um know us better, understand our organization better, all in the spirit of we we wanted to be good neighbors with them. Uh, we are all unpaid volunteers with the exception of one uh part-time paid consultant. Am I prone to this two minutes?
All right, go ahead. You can finish this summary.
Yeah, it will, it will get, I'll be done in a second. Um, uh, and and just to dissuade the thought that we're this large corporation um that's gonna put up multiple uh facilities with Constantine wire and so forth. But more importantly, we wanted them to know our heart and what we were going to accomplish. We believe the meeting went well. It ended with applause. Um, and we continued the conversation with numerous members of the neighborhood inside and outside of the facility. Um, obviously, we don't have one hundred percent uh approval of our plans from the neighbors. Um, but we also left Impact nine two eight business cards with information. We were transparent in person, in writing, on social media. And as you say, our our understanding is that all paperwork's in order and we've met all the parameters. We also have an online petition with four hundred plus signatures supporting what we're going to be doing, uh also supportive letters. And just to remind everyone, this benefits not only Lake Havasu City, but it in uh benefits all of Mojave County.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions?
Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I do. Um, in one of the letters of complaint, it stated that Calvary Baptist Church is holding of your five oh one C three. Is that true?
It's not true at all.
The church is not involved in this at all?
It's only involved in it to the extent that one of our board members is employed by Calvary Baptist Church. We are a small organization. We do not rent office space. We use the church's address for the purpose of initiating our tax returns and so forth. We have a a post office office box now, and we have uh we're planning to post that on our website as well.
Your property's in whose name?
The uh Impact nine two eight name.
Nothing to do with the church?
There's been no funding except for some initial cost to to set up the five oh one C three.
Reason why I ask is we had something in uh Kingman that was to do with the church, and it changed the whole part dynamic of uh our discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
If you could just refresh my memory again, what is the age of the kids that would be in the facility?
Twelve to six, uh twelve to seventeen.
All right, and how how did, how is schooling achieved? Would they be bused or are they homeschooled?
They, it depends on the individual student. Um, many of them would not be suitable for public school or private school outside of the of the home. Um, most of them will be deficient in credits, um which we will work with them on inside the home. Um, that's the bottom line.
Right, and what is the ratio, what would be the ratio of staff to to children again?
I wish Maddie were here. She's our specialist, but if if I'm recalling correctly, the the limit, the um minimum would be two staff members during the day, one at night. We wish to make it three or four during the day and two at night. We just believe that's a better operation.
What was the maximum number of?
Ma- maximum number is twelve.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you very much. Diana Santa?
Hi, my name's Diana Santa. I live at four two four four East Wagon Wheel Drive in Lake Havasu City, eight six four zero four. So to, we done some home, some homework and staff, according to a lot of the information we find, it's supposed to be one staff member per four people. They have twelve, they need four staff members, at least during the day, and then at night they were gonna have two. That's what we were told. So just to clarify that, how many staff members? Um, and on that, that would mean I did some calculations at uh uh paying the staff per hour, minimum wage fourteen seventy, did the calculations for during the day at twelve hours, two at night for twelve hours, and it comes to about thirty-two thousand dollars a month just for their staff. So trying to understand how they're going to pay for all this, how is this gonna sustain for a long term? Donations and fundraisers are typically unreliable, so just on that. The other thing is when they uh, phew, I got a little funny today. Uh, when they uh put a uh the application for ARPA, they described the need, and they said that the need in Havasu is uh to assist primarily three groups, foster families, uh the children and senior citizens and underprivileged citizens. So where's the money going now for them? Where where will they get the money to support this in their application? It says all through their application that that's what they're focusing on, this is what we need. So I'm a little concerned they're spending up to a million dollars to build a home that won't be resellable if it doesn't work, because the bathroom is designed for an athletic club, four showers, four toilets, four sinks in one room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Lu Chetta Richard?
Good morning, my name's Lu Seta, Richard.
My sincere apologies.
I get it all the time. Um, I live at seven six zero four Valley View Drive, Lake Havasu City, Havasu Heights. Um, I do believe Impact nine two eight's project is built to build a foster home for teenagers is based on empathy, love, and compassion, but it has several inconsistencies that are quite concerning. Sustainability of a project this large has yet to be proven by Impact nine two eight. Assuming grants and donations will be awarded to them to construct such a building that will undoubtedly be cost over a million, I would say, if not more, is both futile and lacking sustainability. If there is such a need to help foster families in Lake Havasu City and senior citizens and the underprivileged, then why not use the ARPA funds awarded to them in that area? I understand things change over time and this, and that is a concern as well. December second of twenty twenty-four, they announced they were in the beginning stages of opening a transformative equine-based residential treatment center. Today, they say it's going to be a family-style foster home and will not be a treatment center, behavioral center, or a detention program. So i- is it a treatment center or not? While that's what they say today, how are we to believe it won't change in the future? In the past several weeks and months, we've heard a lot of horrible negative issues with foster group homes. For example, the one that Emily Pike ran away from and was brutally mutilated. And the sad issues leading to the deaths of Christian Williams, Cameron Myers, Satilia uh Avalar, I'm sure I'm messing that up, Jacob Lodgett.
Thank you very much.
And others. Thank.
John Crawley?
Good morning, my name is John Crawley. I live at seventy-five seventy-seven North Rancho Vista Drive in the Havasu Heights area of uh Lake Havasu. Uh, I was here last month in protest against this project, and I'm back again. Um, in regards to the last meeting, I'm not sure what the protocol is, but uh some of the members on the Commission interjected their personal uh experiences with foster care. Uh, I thought it kind of created a bias. There was another member also that is not here today that mentioned that he didn't know, understand why we didn't protest the bunker bar that's a mile west of us and the new housing tract, which is a mile east of us. This is in our neighborhood. This is what, we're here, we care. Uh, the uh the Impact nine two eight group admits they've done a pretty, pretty bad job of keeping us informed. The most recent meeting uh was almost by word of mouth rather than any kind of letter notification to the community members. And uh though their their intent, their mission is good, I just don't think it's appropriate for our neighborhood. We just don't want this project in our house, in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Terry Allenbaum, Ba. Oh, okay. My apologies. Not pertaining to item sixteen?
No.
Okay. So you you can just come up when that time comes at the end. I'm gonna take yours out. Uh Jay Darian?
Joe Darian, seventy-five eighty-six North Silly Drive, Havasu Heights. I do have seventeen copies for everyone.
Thank you.
And I I have some questions. Now, the property, I have a copy of the deed, the warranty deed, and I know with the trust and federal trust, you can take, and there is some co-mingling of funds, it is allowed, because when it's a personal person, transferring it over to a party. But it was purchased in the Betts Family Revocable Living Trust. In doing that, isn't that creating a misappropriation of funds? Because it's actually putting it in a revocable living trust. There's heirs to a living trust that are not part of the nine two eight project. And so that's what I have there. And then also, when it was purchased, I have the copy in here and also the file. When it was purchased, it's zoning LA, it's uh RA, it's residential agricultural. And I did call the county. The county said that it was uh changed in nineteen eighty-nine, but I went back the last ten years. Everything that was purchased, bought, sold, listed, has all been listed under residential agricultural. So these are some of the questions that I have that have brought up. Also, internet and everything out there is not appropriate to run that many computers for a homeschool because of where we're at in the location. There is nothing for the girls. As I said, I'm not against children because I have adopted children myself. But there there's no recreation, there's nothing for them, there's no stores, there's nothing close by, there is nothing that's going to benefit them. And then also, I know they said they weren't associated or affiliated with the Calvary Baptist Church, but on the deed, I noticed everything goes to the Calvary Baptist Church on sixteen oh five South McCulloch. And that's, the federal government accepts that as the address, you know, and it's a federal grant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Stephen Robinson, Roxy. Oh, all right, perfect. Okay, all right, I'll pull you out and you can come up then. Uh Roxy, ooh, Ginokio, I think I messed that one up last time, so my apologies. Tammy Milky. Um, I'm sorry, Mister or Miss Loya, I can't read the beginning. Uh Lori Graves and Sheri, oh, you're the applicant. Okay, you could all take a seat down front. Roxy?
Morning, my name is Roxy Ginokio, live at seven five seven nine Lake Havasu, uh North Wagon Wheel Drive um in Havasu Heights. Um, my whole on all of the group home, because it is a group home, it's uh make it feel warm and fuzzy, it's not a foster. It's they they're everything that you read, the, if they had the picture up of the the house itself that they've designed, it is very commercial. They've got four showers, four toilets, four sinks, looks just like the fire department plans where you go in, and that's what theirs look like. Um, we're just that that's, first off, it's illegal for the county to take a zone that we are and do a commercial facility in a agricultural rural area that's for residents. Um, that's pretty much where where we stand on that, because there you can't take a commercial facility and do a special use for it in a rural residential agricultural. It just doesn't fit the plan that Mojave did for our little Havasu Heights area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tammy Milky?
Tammy Milky, I am a resident in Havasu Heights at address seven five four nine North Rancho Vista Drive. I am not in support of the Impact nine two eight in our neighborhood. I am a professional school counselor with twenty-five years of experience working with young girls and boys from group homes. The members leading Impact nine two eight do not have any experience in what it takes to completely run a group home and meet the needs of these young girls. Just because you work at a restaurant does not mean you know how to operate and own one. Impact nine two eight is not putting the needs of the girls first. If the needs of these girls was a priority, they would have more professional constituents on their team, like psychologists and social workers, or even a school counselor that can convince them what needs to be done educationally and socially for these girls. They rushed to purchase land because they needed to use the grant money before they lost it and had no real details of services for these girls, not to mention all the building needs like water usage, septic, and more. As commissioners, it is your duty and responsibility to gather and understand all aspects of the situation to vote and not make a decision based on your personal or political reasons. A special use permit is requesting a change in the current existing zoning for a property in a neighborhood that can affect the character and quality of the surrounding area. Zoning regulations ensure proper uses of the area. Several factors are considered when these types of regulations are decided to be put in place when the county created the community. Effective zoning regulations help to protect property values, and they have a purpose. This change of zoning will significantly impact on the development of the Heights area. Even worse, the negative on impact on these young girls' lives, they want to place in a home out forty-five minutes from the city where everything is located for them, no real support or plans to their educational, social, mental, and emotional needs.
Thank you. Christine Loya?
Hello, I just wanted to say thank you guys for your guys' time. My name is Christina Loya. My address is three 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 one Silver Saddle Drive. I am in support of Impact nine two eight. I was a current, or I was a foster child, um and I'm on the board, so I wanted to share a little bit of my story. I was in foster care in California in a group home, and my mom was an alcoholic and my dad was a drug user, and I was not a bad child or in a facility, but I was given an opportunity to be removed from my unsafe home and a unable to like make a difference and change and like be prepared for adulthood. Um, and I was safe, so that's what we are trying to provide for these kids. Right now, there's no homes in Mojave County that are serving these young teens that I once was. I'm a business owner in Lake Havasu now. I am a mom, and so I have made such a huge change in my upbringing and what I was exposed to. Um, and that's what we're trying to do for these kids. Right now, they're all sent away to out of their community, um, and we just wanna make a difference. I understand they're saying things like not in their backyard, and they don't want it in their community, um, but if we don't do it, who will? So we just wanna make a difference. We just want these kids to have the opportunities to become successful adults um in our community and breaking the cycle of drugs and being in the system and going to jail, and I think we have the opportunity to make a real impact with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lori Graves?
Hi, Gabe.
Yes, ma'am, you're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lori Graves, and my address is four one one six East Coronado Road, Lake Havasu City. I spent thirty years primarily teaching at-risk teens at a California continuation high school. Consider three key points from the American Orthopsychiatric Association's consensus statement of group care for children and adolescents. One, every child has a basic right to grow up in a safe home with a trusted, committed parent figure. Two, group homes should not be used as living arrangements because of their inherently detrimental effects on children regardless of age and can never substitute as a home environment. Impact nine two eight has said the minimum state for these teens is six months. Group care may be related to an increased likelihood of problem behavior as well as psychological or physical harm. For example, Minkus Mountain Academy in Prescott is currently under investigation for sexual abuse of thirteen girls by male staffers. Arizona Senate Bill thirteen thirty-three passed in twenty twenty-five lists group care facilities as a last resort option following: one, a parent; two, grandparents; three, kinship, extended family; four, licensed family foster; and five, therapeutic foster care. The child must be placed in a least restrictive environment. It is very difficult to find qualified and trained staff in Arizona. You can verify this by asking local teachers about the continuous turnover of unqualified support staff in Kingman Unified School District. The Arizona National Guard Youth Challenge Project in Queen Creek was closed by DOD ten years ago due to lack of available qualified staff and the depletion of state funding. It had successfully mentored and educated teens for over twenty years. Why do these ladies with no intention of being the caregivers think that they can meet the needs of these teens when the Arizona National Guard project could not? Perhaps these ladies should each consider fostering two girls, thereby providing fourteen to sixteen girls with genuine loving homes instead of locking them into this group care facility. instead of locking them into this group care facility with constantly rotating underqualified staff? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closing the public hearing, does any commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant or staff at this time? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item 16.
Chairman Hasset.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Martin wants to, staff to clarify if that is commercial intent.
Chairman Hasset, Commissioner Martin, so a special use, this special use permit is, the zoning stays residential, the zoning isn't changing, it's going to remain the RE residential recreation zoning. Um, but the special use permit, it does allow for a commercial type of use. So we recognize that this is kind of in between residential and commercial. Uh, one of the conditions of approval is a site plan where they will have to meet commercial improvement requirements for the site.
You good with that? No other questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion on item 16.
I would like to say just, you know, I, I've looked through everything on the website. I, I think the intentions are fantastic, but I think it's ill conceived as to the location. And looking at this floor plan, this is not a hall, you know, it doesn't look like a home that will fit into this neighborhood. This looks indeed like a commercial facility, so based on that, I would make a recommendation for denial.
Motion to deny.
So.
May I address the.
Sorry, the public hearing's closed, but one, just one second.
Okay.
If it's a question direct to you that they want answered, I'd be happy to reopen it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and I, you know, I consider this as, uh, this premise to be, um, an incredible opportunity and invaluable asset to them, to the community, to these young ladies. Um, you know, but these type of facilities, they, they just, they, they just bring a lot of issues that are, that are inherent to the operations that are uncertain to, to a community and to a neighborhood. And it just, it, it, the fact that there's not the, a strength of support from the neighborhood and from the community at large, I'm going to have to second the motion on the table.
We have a first and a second, all in favor for denial of item 16.
Aye.
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 I would say motion is denied. Thank you.
Chairman, uh, just wanted to clarify, so the motion is denied? I think the motion was for a denial, correct?
Motion was for denial, so the motion is approved.
Approved for the denial.
The denial is approved.
Sincere apologies, we have a first and a second of a motion to deny item 16, all in favor was, okay.
And, and if we could, just because I'm not sure if the people online are.
They're typing in their responses.
Okay.
We've made a new rule that, nothing audible because of the delay.
Interesting.
Or a request, I should say, not a rule. Item number one, Vicki.
Agenda item one is an evaluation of a request for amendment to the Board of Supervisors Resolution 2025 dash 011, which approved a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 40216047 from an RE slash 10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR slash 2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size zone to amend the location of the new zoning designations in the scenic vicinity. We have received one opposition letter, staff finds application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you very much, opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? No one on teams, or 12 is the only one on team, so. Okay, closing the public hearing, do any commissioners have comments for staff?
I do. Yes, thank you. So, um, looking at this, and I think the, the, uh, the opposition made this, this statement, or, or at least requested a clarification perhaps. Um, looks like there's a public right-of-way that is going through these potential lots or perhaps just to the north of it. When I scaled it out, it looks like there's not enough acreage there to get two and a half, two, two and a half acre parcels, uh, south of that existing right-of-way. So could you help me understand if that's an existing right-of-way? And then second, are we going to allow them to just delete that road? I think it's Brigham Trail, not connecting through.
Uh, Chairman Hasset, Commissioner Bradshaw, so it does appear that that is a right-of-way that continues through this parcel. Part of the, the next step in the process for them, uh, if this were to get approved, would be to do a parcel plat, that would effectively split the properties. So on that parcel plat, they have to show that those parcels will meet the minimum lot size. We do see on occasion, so the zoning is a 2-acre minimum lot size and that allows that fluctuation if they have to, uh, shift it a little bit to, for a right-of-way. Um, they do need to provide legal access to the site. If they can't get it the way that they want it configured with that right-of-way, they would have to go through a public process to abandon that right-of-way through the site, which is a process that they can do, uh, that goes through our Public Works Department. Uh, but that would need to be done before we would approve that parcel plat if those parcels were not meeting the minimum.
Okay, thank you, I, quick, uh, quick clarification, so there is this, um, it appears to be some, somewhat of a survey map, there's no indication of who drew it or how it, it does have bearings and distances on it. Um, and, and it does not show that right-of-way, so that concerns me, so. So past that, I'm, it's, I'm probably okay with them being two acres, that doesn't really bother me. I just, I think that that road needs to be maintained.
Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion on item one.
I move that we had approve item number one with a stipulation that, that Bingham Trail Road, uh, continues through the parcel.
One second.
Okay, we have first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item two, Cassidy.
Item two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 40277007R from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the scenic vicinity. Staff finds application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you very much, opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing, commissioners, comments or questions for staff?
Do have a couple.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, okay, so number one, looks like there is an existing asphalt road. Um, it also looks like this is an existing graded, developed subdivision, quasi-subdivision. So two questions, number one, is this pathway to circumvent the subdivision regulations? Number two, does this create a cul-de-sac that is too long? And is there a requirement to connect this through east-west?
Uh, Chairman Hasset, Commissioner Bradshaw, so when we get these applications in, we do take a look at the, uh, existing owners, um, and from the information that we can figure out who is running these LLCs that typically own these. We couldn't find any connection between the property owners to say, yes, it seems that they're skirting the subdivision rules. Um, with that being said, the, we can see that it continues to develop kind of down the row a little bit. Um, but being a minor land division, uh, they're not subject to the same requirements of the land division regulations. If this were a subdivision, they would probably need a petition of exception for the length of that cul-de-sac or have it connect all the way through. But because it's not a formal subdivision, it's a minor land division, that requirement is not applied.
Uh, one other question, and, and I don't know if you know this or not, is this connected to a, a city, uh, water system? Or is this, um, a dry well system?
The Chairman Hasset, Commissioner Bradshaw, the application states that they'd be connecting to a well.
Any other questions or comments for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item two.
I move that we approve item two.
First.
For staff recommendations.
One second, Nat.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Martin approves and so does Commissioner Morris.
Perfect, hearing none opposed, item carries, item three, Melanie.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan for Assessor's Parcel Number 40264105 and portions of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 40264104 and 40232234 from a general commercial land use designation to a medium density residential land use designation and a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 40232234 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a C2H highway commercial zone and an RE 1A residential recreation 1-acre minimum lot size zone and Assessor's Parcel Numbers 40264105107 and 109 and a portion of 234 and 104 from an RE 10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE 1A residential recreation 1-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a residential subdivision and a commercial lot in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Uh, staff does find that the, uh, application is proper for consideration subject, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much, opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Seeing and hearing no one, I am going to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by the commissioners for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item three.
I will move that we approve item number three. Second.
We have a first, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Morrison, Commissioner Martin both approve.
Item three carries, item four, Melanie.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rescission of VOS Resolution 1990-82, revert the property back to a C2 general commercial and CRE, commercial recreational zone for Assessor's Parcel Numbers 22431001002 and 075 for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Mojave Valley vicinity. The staff does find that the, uh, application is proper for consideration.
Thank you, opening the public hearing, is the applicant? There's really no applicant for the. Anyone that wishes to speak on this item? I have no one listed, so closing the public hearing, questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item four.
Move approval.
First.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Are we, are we making approval to rescind?
To rescind.
And the resolution.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris approve.
Yep. Item carries, item five, Melanie.
Item five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for Assessor's Parcel Numbers 22431001 and 075 from a C2 general commercial zone and a CRE, commercial recreation zone to an SDC, special development commercial zone with CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone uses with an RV park allowance for an RV storage facility in the Mojave Valley area. We have received one letter of opposition for this application. The staff does find that the application is proper for consideration, standard to, uh, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much, opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Good morning, name and address please.
Good morning, uh, my name is Bo Cooper. I'm the entitlement director for United Engineering Group. Address is 3205 West Ray Road in Chandler, Arizona. Um, here on behalf of the applicant, oh, I guess I am the applicant, here on behalf of the property owner and the client who are also here, um, to answer any questions if you have any. Um, we don't have any additional, uh, presentations or, or exhibits at this time from what staff has provided, but we are available to answer.
Perfect, thank you. Wait, any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, so, to me, this seems like a pretty odd ask. So you have a RV storage lot that you're going to allow people to stay overnight in. Help me understand why that's a good idea.
Sure, it, it is, it is primarily an RV storage, uh, facility. Um, the rezone request is to allow for, uh, the, the product type is, is essentially a garage with, with a covered parking area. The RV unit itself would be parked in the covered, uh, parking area, not necessarily in the garage. The rezone request would allow for the, I guess technically, outdoor storage of the, the RV unit. The, the intent is to allow, uh, the, the RV, uh, clients, the people that own each of these spaces. Um, if need be, they would be allowed to essentially dry camp at these spots, um, overnight or for a couple nights, um, if, if, if needed. It is not meant to be an RV park, right? It, it would just allow them to stay there, um, and dry camp overnight, uh, for a night or two if, if need would be the request.
How does this not become just a dry campground down the road? And where people, you know, you're storing RVs, but it's a way better economic value to let people stay there for two or three days dry?
Yeah, well, it's our understanding when we do come forward with, with the site planning process and the development of this site, um, it will come with, uh, with regulations, um, that will allow, and I don't know if we, we put a, we put a cap on the amount of nights that are, that are required. Um, it, because like I said, we, we do not intend this to be a campground. That is not, that is not the intent. And again, I believe the, the, the SDC zoning, um, provides for that. Um, I don't want to call it CCNRs, it's not what it is, but it's, it, you know, would be similar to, similar to that.
How familiar with this area are you? This sounds like the project that's outside of Havasu. You said there's like a garage and then a covered parking?
The, the riverbound, it is, I mean, it's.
But that's ownership, yours is just renting.
Um, correct, correct.
And how long are the rental terms?
Um, I don't know if, uh, you have an answer to that?
So with a, a land lease or? You want to come up and name an address for the record?
Reddington, project manager for the owner. Uh, the, the cam associated with the property would allow for ongoing maintenance and travel or for, uh, trash services and things of that nature. Uh, in terms of the, um, uh, riverbound, it's, it's a similar, it's very similar. In terms of the ownership, uh, owners could come out, they would have their equipment there, they would stay there, the boats. They could pull in, they'd have their RV, uh, limited time span, so it's not a campground. Um, so it's a hybrid or a combination of being able to come and vacation. It's close to the river, they've got access, they'd be able to have a weekend vacation and put their stuff back in the garage and off they go back to their residence.
But if, if you're selling this, so they're going to be CCNRs or like an HOA in place that restricts the amount of time they're allowed to spend on property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you doing like a, a land lease? Are you going to eventually, so, this is down the line after approval, you'll, they'll separate this out into their own lots for sale?
Correct. Yeah, the, the land lease idea is probably the most logical piece of that. HOA is, uh, puts us in kind of a different category of things. Uh, the land lease would allow for them to abide by regulations, uh, parking, noise, you know, all, all the things that would be consistent with maintaining a, a, a park, a property, uh, that would be conducive for all owners in, in terms of, you know, what can be stored there. Uh, all those kinds of things would fit into the, I guess we would call it more of a CCNR outlook.
Is there going to be some building units on there where, uh, I saw some off of, uh, up near Lake Havasu where they have the garage and the RV box in and riverbound, riverbone? Is it, is it similar to that or the same?
It's very similar, yes. So it is a garage and then it's has a, the design is a garage with a canopy area. So you've got a, a parking area, so you pull in your RV, maybe you've got your boat in the garage. Uh, maybe you've got, you know, desert toys, uh, razors, those kinds of things, whatever the recreational vehicle might be that you're, you're keeping contained, uh, in a, in a, you know, conditioned environment.
Well, the garage has no living space?
No.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anyone on teams, questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, Chairman Hasset. My question is, is I keep hearing the word ownership, uh, from, from both of the, uh, representatives. My question is, I keep hearing the word ownership from both of the representatives for the applicant. Ownership is far different than a lease holder. It sounds like they are going to be for sale. These things tend, tend, not always, but tend to turn into a impromptu RV park. Utilities tend to appear afterwards, after everything's settled in, water and sewer It sounds more like an RV park than a storage facility to me. Can he address those questions, please, the applicant?
Yes, yeah, so it will, it will have utilities, we will have electric and water. We are proposing to have a single dump station as well. Those are all amenities typical to most RV storage units. I have the RV storage unit as well that has all of those utilities. The difference being, I think you, as you pointed out, each of these spaces would be, would be sold or would have, you know, would have owners to each individual, each individual space. I guess the, again, the provision against having this turning into an RV park or campground would be handled in, in the, you know, the CCNRs or the overall oversight and documents, authority documents over the subdivision.
Did that answer your question?
I have a question for staff then. Being as they would be for sale, would this be the applicable instrument?
Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Morris, so they referenced riverbound storage. Riverbound storage is an RV park where they do lease out those individual spaces for differing amounts of time. If they were to split this into individual lots, they would be required to go through the subdivision process. Yeah, so they could potentially do like a condominium type plat where there's the underlying parcel remains under ownership and then they parcel out the airspace like a condominium. So, that's a potential route they could go as well. For condominium type storage projects, typically what we see is a site plan that gets approved by the county first, and then after that site plan is approved, then they go through that condominium plat process.
Thank you. So, if you're providing water and electric to the facilities, are there any restroom facilities in the structures?
No, there are not.
No sinks, no disposal of water at all?
Oh, no, there's not. The facilities are just a garage, just an overhead covered parking area and a garage.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Morris?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant from the commission?
So, if I'm seeing this accurately, this is a very similar footprint to the riverbound is your intent. There would be no, there'd be water utilities to each unit, but no sanitary facilities, sewer facilities. And so, so they, so an owner could come in for a few days, live, party, have a good time, leave with their RV or not, and have it parked there based on their ownership and... So, if that, with that, so is there, are there amenities that are included with this type of facility? Do you plan on having, is there going to be an, will there be an onsite facilitator? How would you manage this type of...
I mean, the amenities, there is going to be, you know, some open space, you know, parks, because there's required open space for the zoning. And like we said, like a dump station, but there's no, you know, there will be no, there's no like clubhouse, there's no, you know, big, big, big park facility or anything like that because it is, again, still intended on being a storage, a storage unit with the one single, like I said, with the one single dump station.
So, one other question, and I don't know if you have this answer, but so would you be accessing off of the Riverside Road or off of?
Access would be off of Brockman and off of Plantation, basically on the east and west end.
So, there would, there would be no, I guess it's Levy, Levy Drive?
Levy, on the south side.
We drive on the south and Levy Way on the north?
No access.
So, no access off of Levy?
No.
And my understanding is that's where the primary oppositions were, were to the south?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions or comments?
Chairman Hassett?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin wants to know if they're selling spaces, should they be doing a subdivision?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, so we do have several storage units throughout Mojave County that do what's called condoing. That does not have to go through the subdivision process. It's a separate process, it essentially is just a parcel plat, but we do a site plan first and then they do a parcel plat that makes it a condo. This would be the correct mechanism for this type of use and division would be the condoing for this parcel.
There's no other questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion on item five.
Thank you.
Or, excuse me, close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item five.
It looks, I mean, when I look at the, look at the riverbound, it doesn't look like they're condoed or it's just a lease payment or however they own that. And so, or sell, or rent, or lease, I think it's, that can be worked out at a staff level and I recommend that we approve this.
There's a first?
A second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Morris denies, Commissioner Martin approves.
Alright. Motion carries, item six, Cassidy.
Item six is an evaluation for a request for a rescission of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2004186 to revert the property back to a C2 general commercial zone for assessors parcel number 22721034 for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Fort Mojave vicinity. Staff finds the rescission proper for consideration.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing and see if the commission has any questions for staff, otherwise I'd like to entertain a motion on item six.
I have a quick question, hopefully it's quick, but it looks like that everything around it is C2, so should we just leave it C2? Or, excuse me, general? So, yeah, everything around us is the exact same, so is there a reason why we want to rescind it?
Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Bradshaw, so this item is, this parcel was rezoned to commercial manufacturing back in 2004. They never met the conditions of approval, so this item is reverting that zoning back to the C2 general.
Yeah, I recommend we approve that rescension.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris approve.
Item carries, item seven, Melanie.
Item seven is an evaluation of a request for rescission of VOS Resolutions 2024045 and 2024230, cause the property revert back to an AR5A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone, assessors parcel number 22514019 for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Mojave Valley vicinity. Staff does find that the request is proper for consideration.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? No one else has signed up to speak, so closing the public hearing, questions or comments from commissioners for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item seven as read.
The first?
Second.
A second.
Alright, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris approve.
Motion carries, item eight, Matthew.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a petition of exception to not require sidewalks or streetlights for Desert Lakes Estates, tract 4152, a proposed subdivision of assessors parcel number 22624073 in the Fort Mojave vicinity. This is another one of those subdivisions that started back in the early 2000s. They have existing phases that are completed. Back when those phases were completed, we did not require sidewalks or streetlights for this density. This is the next phase that's being finished out for this subdivision and current requirements of the land division regulations do require sidewalks and streetlights, so they're requesting a petition of exception to finish out this subdivision. Mojave County Public Works did review the request and they have no objection. Staff finds that this application is proper.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, the applicant is present. Mr. Gall, do you wish to speak at this time or is it available for questions?
Good afternoon, John Gall, 2409 Rica Drive, Kingman, Arizona, Arizona Land Water Resources, actually a participant in this project development. As Mr. Gunnerson said, it was a 2007 preliminary plat that was done on a project and with the economic collapse, it died. There are no streetlights or sidewalks in the subdivision. It's all built out but this last 40 acres and we'd like to conclude it. We do have it sold to a home builder who doesn't require the sidewalks and there's no issue with flood or as Mr. Gunnerson said, Public Works on the exceptions, so we ask that you approve it and I can answer any questions you might have.
I think we're good, but thank you for the availability.
Thank you.
There's one person signed up to speak on this item and I apologize on the name, Dave Hassan Linkus? Am I even close? No, sorry. Name and address for the record, Dave.
2134 Desert Lakes Estates. Dave Hassan Linkus. The reason for sidewalks is obvious, it's safety. This is a Century Homes development, it is not a Desert Lakes phase extension. Let me put my glasses on. Desert, the developer does not offer houses with RV garages or three car garages, which is 70% of the existing construction in our estate. These homes don't equal the value of existing homes, even brand new. Our homes are from 380 to 500. These are going to be in 200 range somewhere. These homes are aimed at younger families that can afford them with children. There's a reason for a sidewalk. And they have two houses, two-story houses that bring more cars without garages. That puts more cars on the street with the kids. So, I don't think it's an extension to what we have. It's a, it's a home builder that's going to build a bunch of houses that are the same and inexpensive and normally they're block walled in by themselves, not extended into an existing nice neighborhood. So, I guess we're not going to stop that part, but they could put sidewalks in there for safety. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Closing the public hearing, do commissioners have comments or questions for staff?
I have a question for maybe the applicant, if that's okay.
Okay, opening the public hearing, if the applicant can come back?
John Gall for the applicant.
So, do you intend to keep the same lot sizes as previously platted? Do you plan to change that at all or?
Yes, Commissioner Bradshaw, we intend to keep the preliminary plat lot sizes that are already been submitted to the staff for review and I'd just like to address the former gentleman's comments, I appreciate them, but the houses that are being intent to be built in there are in the mid to high 300,000s. They come with front yard landscaping and block walls and they're very conducive, they've been built throughout the portion of that previous subdivision and in other areas of Fort Mojave. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I actually have one other one. So, do you have any, are there lots that access off of Everglades or do they access off interior streets?
I believe they access off Everglades, I have to defer to staff on that.
Looks like there's others in the adjacent subdivision, that was just a curiosity. And with that, I guess my ultimate question with that is, Everglades appears to be kind of a thoroughfare. Obviously, you're going to do some upgrades along Everglades Boulevard. Would you consider putting in a sidewalk at least to that level where that's kind of a collector area where you might, at least you have the beginnings of a trail system, a sidewalk system on the collector, not necessarily in the interior streets?
Commissioner Bradshaw, I believe that was one of Public Works' comments that we do and that is included in the plan. We're only asking for the petition on the other areas.
Just on the interior lots?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Thank you very much. I'd like to close the public hearing, entertain a motion on item eight.
I do have a question for staff though, if that's okay.
Fire away.
So, is that, is that a condition, the sidewalk along Everglades? Do you know if that is a stipulation in the...
Commissioner Hassett, Commissioner Bradshaw, that is not currently a condition on what's being proposed. You are more than welcome to add that condition to your recommendation.
Would you be okay with that? Okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion on item eight, coming from you.
I move that we approve item eight with, with the additional requirement of full improvements in sidewalk along Everglades Boulevard along this subdivision.
I just, I do have a question. What would it connect to? There's no sidewalk north or east or west.
That's a good, good point. It doesn't connect to anything other than just the opportunity to, in the future, have continued connectivity.
Just kick the can down the road and create an inconvenience or something?
It's a continuity.
Well, there's no, it's not a continuity of anything.
But if you don't do it right now, you'll never get it.
On either side though, it's driveways and front yards, so where would you even put a sidewalk in?
You put a driveway in sidewalks all the time, that's not a problem.
Right, but those neighbors could potentially then lose access to part, portion of their driveway to be turned to a sidewalk?
I don't think so, because it'd be inside of the right of way. So, if you notice, there is that, that darker line is the right of way, so the sidewalk would land inside of the road right of way is how I would expect that to happen. I would not expect it to be coming out of the proposed lots. It would be inside of the public right of way. But I am in favor of the sidewalks being continued, you know, no sidewalks, similar to what's adjacent to it, it makes a ton of sense, same with the streetlights, that makes a ton of sense. But I do, and I understand your point that there, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, so to speak, but if you don't do it now, you can never get it.
I guess, I guess I'm kind of just confused. If I'm looking at this correctly, Everglades is to the north?
Yes.
To the left, there's, it's already developed?
Yes.
So, east and west is already developed as well as north?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we're going to make them throw in a sidewalk?
We are. That's my, that's my request. And I've seen this happen often where you just, you ask for it for, when you have the opportunity and then down the road, there's, there's availability to have that connection finished. You'll notice to the, to the west, there's another portion of Everglades that has a similar set of improvements that is a road, again, a sidewalk to nowhere. It just gives the opportunity to move it and have that connectivity available as opposed in this, at least this segment, that you have to get less...
I would also want that stipulation in this approval. Because I, because I agree, if you don't get it now, you're never going to get it.
Yeah, they can connect by walking over across the road and that's the only thing you're ever going to connect to, but there's a motion on the table with an approval for stipulations and I believe a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm against.
Well, the problem is that, just for clarification purposes, the applicant is okay with it. I don't agree with it, but if we deny it, we're going to be back again, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Either way, the applicant's happy with it, so.
Mr. Chair, if you, so if the motion gets denied, you can entertain another motion as well, without the sidewalks.
Okay, so, first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris approve.
Okay, well, I'm against, but motion carries, and the applicant's happy, so problem solved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item nine, Cassidy.
You're not king.
I'm okay with that.
Item nine is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number three-zero-six-two-four-two-one-seven from an AR-ten-A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-three-A agricultural residential three-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff finds application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing. The applicant. Is that a service dog in the stroller? Item number nine, opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time?
I'm available for questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners for the applicant? Anyone on teams have a question? If there are no questions, I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item nine.
I'll make a motion to approve item minus red.
Okay, first.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item carries. Item ten has been withdrawn. Item eleven, Vicki.
Agenda item eleven is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan from a suburban residential land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone of Assessor's parcel number three-one-nine-one-three-two-six-nine from an AR agricultural residential zone to a C-two general commercial zone to allow for swap meet in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends denial of the proposed amendment and rezone, as this rezone would be considered spot zoning and does not align with the Mojave County general plan for the area.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Oh, do you wish to speak at this time? So why don't you come on down, name an address for the record, then you can make your statement, okay? Thank you.
My name is Marie Espinoza, and I live on seventeen-two-four in North Manor Drive, Dolan Springs, Arizona, eighty-six-four-four-one. And he was told that the land was commercial, and he bought it with that acknowledgement. And when he started putting the fence around it, the county came and said that it wasn't commercial, so he couldn't put any yard sales or anything, and that's when he applied to have the permissions to, to open up at least a garage sale or something. He's eighty-four years old, and he's trying to do something to keep himself busy, so he doesn't have to be asking for anything. He likes to work for what he gets.
Thank you very much. Hold on one second, okay? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
For the applicant.
I appreciate your statement and his thought process on the property, so thank you. Closing the public hearing, oh, I'm sorry. Nope, that was just one.
There is a lady that wants to say.
There is, no, that's Marie Espinoza, she's, she's down with the applicant. Yep. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Is that a pen? Is that a yes? Oh, my, my apologies. If you'd like to speak on item eleven, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Janet Clark. I live at one-six-six-four-five North Ocatillo Drive in Dolan Springs, and I would like to state that I'm opposed to this rezoning. Number one, it's a very heavy traffic area, and the only parking is on the side of the road. We always have a lot of problems with cattle crossing that area, but it's also, it's too close to the school zone. The traffic is very heavy where they're wanting to put this swap meet. Mr. Ramus had another swap meet previously, right in the town of Dolan Springs, and it was a real eyesore. It looked more like open storage. It didn't matter if it rained, it snowed, it sunshine, stuff was left out, it was uncovered, stuff was donated and dumped out in front of the fence. For years, Dolan Springs has been trying to clean up its act and, and make the town look better, and based on prior history of his other swap meet, and the swap meet that's right across from the Canyon Cafe, I believe he has some ownership in that swap meet. They're a real eyesore. So I'm opposed to rezoning this commercial, from residential to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closing the public hearing, does commissioners have any questions for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item eleven.
Given the staff recommends denial, I would go with, make a motion for denial.
I'll second.
There's a first, second?
Aye.
All in, sorry, all in favor of denying?
Aye.
Okay, none, any opposed? What are they?
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris all agree with the denial.
All right, item eleven is denied. Item twelve, applicant is on teams, Cassidy.
Agenda item twelve is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number two-two-nine-two-two-zero-zero-one-S from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to allow for an open lot storage facility in the Fort Mojave vicinity. We have received one letter of opposition, staff finds application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, does the applicant have a statement, or are you just available for questions?
I'm available for questions.
Very much. Any questions from the commission for the applicant? Nobody on teams either?
Commissioner Martin wants to make sure it's no manufacturing.
No, that isn't the intent here.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions or comments. I'd like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item twelve.
Chairman Hassett?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Martin would like to add it as a condition, that there's no manufacturing.
Does she have a motion?
For it? Yes.
Want to state her motion?
Motion to approve with the condition to add no manufacturing.
Okay, there is a condition of approval with stipulations. There's a first.
Second then.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Morris approves.
Thank you. Item thirteen, Vicki.
Agenda item thirteen is an evaluation of a request for rescission of Board of Supervisors' Resolution two-thousand-nine dash one-ninety-four to revert the property back to an AR-ten-A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone for Assessor parcel numbers and zero-five-zero for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends that Board of Supervisors' Resolution number two-thousand-nine dash one-ninety-four be rescinded and the zoning designation for the site be reverted back to the previous AR-ten-A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion for item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve.
First, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Morris all approve.
Thank you very much. Item fourteen, Vicki.
Agenda item fourteen is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number three-one-zero-zero-two-zero-four-zero from an AR-ten-A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-three-A agricultural residential three-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff finds the application proper for consideration with standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time, or just available for questions? Would you like to speak at this time, or just available for questions? Thank you very much. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? None on teams? No? Okay, closing the public hearing, there's also, well, no one else wanting to speak, so closing the public hearing, commissioners have any questions for staff? Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion on item fourteen.
Make a motion to approve.
First.
I'll second then.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We got ahead of ourselves.
He's typing, that's all I can see. Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Morris approve.
Perfect. Thank you. Item fourteen carries. Item fifteen, Melanie.
Item fifteen is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel numbers two-five-four-three-two-zero-nine-seven and zero-nine-eight from an AR thirty-six-A agricultural residential thirty-six-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR four-A agricultural residential four-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the properties into compliance. We do find that the request is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you very much. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Okay, closing the public hearing, any commissioners comments for staff? Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion on item fifteen.
Move to approve.
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, item carries. Sixteen is.
Morris and Commissioner Martin are both.
Oh, thank you, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off there. Okay, item seventeen, discussion regarding applicant's attendance to planning and zoning commission meetings.
Yeah, Chairman Hassett, we just want to bring up kind of continuation of the conversation that happened last month and has been happening at meetings. We certainly recognize the importance of applicants being at the meetings and able to answer questions. We certainly, as staff, strongly, strongly encourage applicants to attend either in person or via Teams, both to this meeting and to the Board of Supervisors' meetings for that reason. However, we did want to clarify that we do not have a requirement that applicants attend the meeting, so certainly if there are concerns or questions that are not able to be answered because the applicant isn't present, then either denying or continuing the item to a later meeting, to give them that opportunity to attend, is certainly warranted, but what we wanted to avoid is denying applications simply because the applicant isn't here, even if there are no concerns or questions associated with it. I didn't notice that at all today, but just wanted to bring that up and kind of clarify that. Any questions on any of that?
Um, I'm good.
I, you know, I'm not offended if somebody doesn't show up, it's at their own peril, and I'm certainly not going to vote one way or the other whether they're here or not. That's my stance on it.
All right. Item eighteen.
Chairman Hassett.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Martin wants to know if we can notify the applicant in writing, if they are not available for questions, they would be most likely denied.
Continued, I can't, you can't do denial, you can only.
Might, maybe delayed or something.
Mr. Chair, and the whole, one of the main reasons that we wanted to kind of bring this up is we don't want to set maybe an unwritten policy that you're gonna get denied if you, if you don't show up, or if you're not attending the meeting. I think, I think like Matthew mentioned, the best practice would probably be if the commission really does have concerns or questions that they want answered, I think the best practice would be to continue the item to the next meeting and allow the applicant, and we'll make sure, staff will let them know, hey, the commission really has some questions, you need to be at the meeting, or it's not gonna move forward, I guess. And so I think that would be the best practice, is, is letting them know that, first of all, staff, like, like Matthew said, we, anytime we interact with these applicants, we're, we're letting them know that they need to be at this meeting. And I think we're having something in writing, like Supervisor's or Martin is mentioning that they should be at this meeting, we tell them the time and place, and the method doesn't necessarily need to be in person, we, we allow for the Teams or video conferencing in, so we're letting them know that, but I would, I would steer clear from setting any type of precedent that, that we're gonna deny your, your application if you're not here.
Yeah, you're giving legal a panic attack. Any other conversations on item seventeen? Otherwise, I'd like to move to item eighteen, commissioner.
I just want to make one more comment, you know, I've been on the other side also out there, and especially when you get a packed agenda with a hundred and fifty people here, the prospect of spending three or four hours down here on a routine rezone, I can, I can certainly understand why some people wouldn't show up.
Yeah.
So, again, I, you know, I don't, I don't ever let that affect the way I vote, and I would agree with staff that it shouldn't affect the way we vote.
All right, item eighteen, commissioners comments, limited due announcements, availability, attendance, conferences, requests for agenda items, future meetings, et cetera. Anyone on Teams? Nope. Item nineteen, call of the public. Would you go grab her so she knows? Thank you. Oh, I thought she was just outside, sorry.
No. She was briefly gonna mention that she wanted to move to Golden Valley five, six years ago, but there was no suitable housing for what she demanded. She'd moved from Yucca Valley to Kingman, and she, and that leads into what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, well, she can speak right after you, but go ahead, name and address for the record, sir.
Steven Robinson, fifty-three-seventy-three, Highway sixty-eight, Golden Valley. I'm gonna read the pertinent parts of the statutes, as some in Golden Valley would want it read. The zoning ordinance and all rezonings and zoning regulations amendments adopted under this article shall be consistent and conform to the expressed demands of the majority of the people who spoke at hearings about the general plan. Section C, in accordance with Article Two, Sections One and Two of the Constitution of the United of Arizona, the board shall ignore individual property rights and personal liberties of the residents, rather follow the directives of most vocal voices when adopting any zoning ordinance. Obviously, that's not what the law says, yet there's a group of people that want to turn that Highway Corridor sixty-eight into one-acre minimum. How many of you want a lot backing up to Highway sixty-eight, a one-acre lot? That, the private property rights of the citizens are important. In, in nineteen sixty-five was the first general plan. The next one wasn't performed until nineteen ninety-five, and as you can see from this map, in addition to the corridor, there were twenty-five square miles of Golden Valley designated as urban development or single, low-density residential or medium-density. In two thousand and two, the county had an area plan that took away those twenty-five square miles. Now the county is proposing taking away the corridor for development, and I believe that's an inappropriate way. Next week, you'll be reading, or doing, next month, you'll be doing a review of the general plan, and I just wanted to give you this information, so you can think about it coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Terri Allenbaugh, I live in Kingman. And basically with, what I was, he was talking about, the general plan. I moved here six years ago, and I could not find a place in Golden Valley where, I'm disabled, and I don't want. and I don't want acreage to take care of. I wanted a smaller lot, something that I could, you know, put me and my brother on maybe. And I just wanted to let you know, I would like that you take in consideration people like me and that has disabilities and so that I don't have to, I didn't want to live in Kingman, but I end up having to buy in Kingman because of this and this reason. So I just want you to take me into consideration when you do this general plan, please, so that you can accommodate people like me. I know there's a lot of people that, you know, we don't want nothing but acreage, but I don't. And I, and I know there are a lot more people like me that don't want acreage to take care of. It's too costly, it's too time-consuming and in my situation, I can't. So please do that for me and I will give my remaining time back to Steve, okay?
He's saying no, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
He's saying no? Oh, yes, I understand. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I had to go outside.
Thank you very much. No other public comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, let's do it. Perfect.
Second.